Good evening and welcome. I'm Don Sharp, president of the Santa Barbara Conservancy, cosponsoring this forum with the online magazine, Santa Barbara View. Both organizations are nonpartisan and do not endorse candidates. This event is being publicized and videotaped for future showing on public access television. Thank you for all being here this evening and for taking the time to watch on television from home if you're doing this at a later date. I couldn't help but draw the parallel between the motto of Santa Barbara View and their mission is to keep Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara. I can't think of a few words that more closely say what we are trying to do here at this forum. The unique emphasis of all tonight's questions will be historic preservation and the historic resources of Santa Barbara. For brief biographies on each candidate, please see your printed programs. And each candidate has been provided space at the rear of the room to put out printed campaign material. And now, down to business. I would like to introduce this evening's moderator, Suzette Naylor. Suzette is a prominent local architect with Thompson-Naylor Architects. She's past chair of the City Historic Landmarks Commission and a Conservancy board member. Suzette.
Thank you, Don. I'd like to start by introducing each candidate in alphabetical order. So may I ask each of you to please raise your hands to indicate who you are? Mr. Sebastian Aldana, Ms. Sharon Byrne, Mr. Cruzito Cruz, Ms. Eia Falcone, Mr. Dale Francisco, Mr. Gerald Mateo, Ms. Kathy Marillo, Mr. Randy Rouse, Ms. Deborah Schwartz, and Ms. Michael Self. Thank you. The format for tonight's forum is in two distinct sections as follows. During the first half of the meeting, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer three predetermined questions that I will ask. These questions have not been shared with any candidate in advance. During the 12-minute break, we will give the audience the opportunity to submit written questions on the provided three-by-five cards for candidates to answer in the second half of the forum. Each question will be posed to all candidates. No questions to specific candidates will be asked. Please be concise in your questions and write a subject line at the top of your card to assist our question sorters. We will do our best to choose those questions that are relevant to historic preservation and resources which were not covered in the first half of the forum. Please have your questions ready for pickup at the beginning of the break to allow our sorters enough time. Given the large number of candidates and limited time, we apologize in advance if you submit a question that is not asked. The second half of tonight's forum will begin by my asking each candidate a question submitted by the audience using a similar format to the first half. As before, each candidate will be allowed one and a half minutes to respond. The forum will conclude with each candidate making a closing statement in a maximum of one minute, and then my very short closing remarks. Because of a very limited time schedule and because, of course, we want to hear as much as possible from each candidate, I will ask you to hold your applause or other reactions until the end of the forum. May I ask you all to please turn off your cellphones? I thought that... Now, I'd like to begin by posing our first question to the candidates. I would like to note that the order in which they must answer has been determined by random numerical selection. We have a team of timers in the front row. If you'd like to hold up your hands? Oh, you don't want to? Okay. Who will keep track of time and show the candidates first a yellow card when they have 30 seconds remaining to speak, and then a red card when their time is up. We again ask each candidate to respect the one and a half minute response time to allow a 9:00 PM completion. So the candidates are seated in the order in which they will answer. I will start with Mr. Mateo, and then start the next question with the second person to his right. The first question is, and please ask me to repeat it if you don't quite get it, "Do you think historic resources play an important role in the economic vitality of this city? How and which types of historic aspects of the city in particular?" Mr. Mateo.
Well, obviously, it's important. The most valuable resources in the city are the environmental resources, the topographical resources. What makes Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara is the environment itself, where the city itself is placed in. And the historic buildings are that part in itself. If we don't keep this together, then who would want to come to Santa Barbara for what it is? It'll be like any other town. I think preserving the look of Santa Barbara means just that, preserving the look of Santa Barbara. And if we don't do that, then people won't have a desire to come and visit our beautiful city, and it'll be just like any other town. Why would somebody want to travel to LA or from Orange County or from LA to see another version of it, just in a different location, especially with the price of gas? But to me, Santa Barbara is a beautiful tapestry, and we've been putting a lot of focus on the fringes to make it look attractive. But the other thing that has to be taken into consideration is that this tapestry has some serious mending to be done in the infrastructure. So we have to show people that when they come to visit Santa Barbara, it's actually a good functioning city, not just a facade.
Thank you. Ms. Falcone, please.
Thank you very much, and I want to thank the Conservancy for putting on this forum and for all of you for taking the time today to come out and spend some time with us and listen to us. Historic resources play one of the most enormous portions of our economic stability and our economic vitality in that the thing that struck me, being from New York but having spent a lot of time in California and other places, is that unlike many places in California, Santa Barbara has these absolutely amazing rich layers of history that go back to the mariners who settled it, to the Californio ranchos, and all up and through the Presidio and so forth. So it's not just for the visitors, although the visitors, it's a unique draw. It's really vital and absolutely critical that we retain all those layers for people to enjoy and understand and become knowledgeable about how California was settled, and the Victorian era, and then the big earthquake, and how we became the Iberian paradise of the western coast. And it really is essential that we retain that. Also, for our residents, it's not just for the visitors, it's for the residents as well, the multicultural families, the generations that go back 10 and 11 generations is quite extraordinary. I'm concerned about keeping those families in California, in Santa Barbara in particular and on the south coast. I could go on, but I'm probably out of time very soon here. There it is.
Close. Thank you, Ms. Marillo.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Mario.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Historic resources create the basis of a community's identity. So in addition to creating what draws tourists here, it also might create like construction jobs and that kind of economic vitality when private and public buildings or other resources are seismically upgraded or remodeled or made from one use to another. It also creates private investment in certain neighborhoods, which is really important. And I salute the Conservancy and the Pearl Chase Society and the Trust for Historic Preservation for the kind of work they do in this area. And also, the function of the city's Historic Landmarks Commission really helps protect what we have in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aldana.
Once again, the question.
"Do you think that historic resources play an important role in the economic vitality of this city? How and which types of historic aspects of the city in particular?"
Yes, I would say yes, and that's part of the reason why a lot of people have came to Santa Barbara and also visit. So, you know, just, you know, the Mission, the Courthouse, Granada, Arlington, Presidio, those are all classic, you know, buildings that we have here.
Thank you. Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you. As a planning commissioner with the city of Santa Barbara, I have been a staunch, unwavering advocate for the first time ever new historic resources element or chapter in our 20-year general plan update. And I see my fellow planning commissioner Stella Larson here, who really, we've together been strong advocates. For this new element, this is going to be the first time in Santa Barbara's history that we are expressing one of our core values in our primary planning document. And in doing that, we're going to ensure that we codify our respect and our good stewardship for historic resources. And that's critical for all of the decisions that are made in the city that will impact our historic resources. Having grown up in Santa Barbara, I attended schools here, and in fact, my fifth grade arts project was to recreate the Mission in a very small scale, sugar cubes painted brown. And then going on to Santa Barbara Junior High and High School, those are two of our 87 city-designated landmarks. And by the way, that's about double the number of landmarks than we have in the county of Santa Barbara. So I look forward to talking with you more this evening about how important preserving and stewardship of our historic resources are to us in Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. Good evening, everybody. Buenas noches. Thank you to the organizers, both organizations, for creating this forum. Muchas gracias. So the historic aspects of it, El Pueblo Viejo, the east-west side communities, sort of now the commerce sections, the theater, the arts, the Upper East, the mesas, the San Roque area, all require district-based elections under Elections Code 14,026,3B. It would provide those neighborhoods and respective neighborhoods the power, the ability, and the decision vote to be accountable to your local representatives, to create historical preservation ordinances. I would be a staunch advocate for historical preservation in many regards, but also our cultural, historical preservation of our American indigeneity of the Chumash people. So we have to also look at it as preservation of culture and preservation of architectural beauty. So I don't agree with Ms. Schwartz. Her general plan, what she's proposing, will kill Santa Barbara. It won't be Santa Barbara for Santa Barbara. So I have more to say that later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. As long as Ms. Schwartz has brought up the topic of the historic resources element, I thought I might thank Shield Lodge, Mary Louise Days, Julia Rios, and others who actually did the first draft of historic resource element. And I was happy as chairman of the ad hoc committee on the general plan to move that project forward. Obviously, historic resources in Santa Barbara are central to the identity of our community. It's what drew a lot of people here in the first place. And in a way, it's ironic, considering that an earthquake nearly leveled the town in the 1920s, that we have so many fabulous buildings, from some of them hundreds of years old. We have the Queen of the Missions. We have fantastic architecture on every street in the city, including this wonderful building that we're in tonight. That, to me, is one of the essential characteristics that distinguishes Santa Barbara from most other cities in California. And that, of course, is why so many people live here, so many people come to visit Santa Barbara. So of course, it's absolutely vital in economic terms. It's what distinguishes us from other cities, and it is one of the foundations of our economic vitality.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse.
Thank you. Well, I've been in business downtown now for about 30 years, so many of my employees consider me an historic resourcer relic. Our historic resources define our culture. They define the unique character. A lot of the unique characters that are found in the different neighborhoods, some of the neighborhoods aren't cookie cutter, they don't all have white plaster and red tile roofs. And that different type of look, whether it be the California cottage, a Victorian, or something we created even later on but did to emulate the historical elements of Santa Barbara, are really important. And for us to be able to do that in a unified way allows people to come and visit our city, understand more about us, who we are and where we came from. So I think it's essential, since tourism does provide a large part of economic engine, to historically preserve, maintain, and follow in character those things that were put before us. So yes, they are in fact an essential element. Things like the Mission certainly, the Courthouse, and our neighborhoods, our residential neighborhoods, are all part of those historic elements along with the natural resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Byrne.
Thank you. Absolutely, historic resources play a vital role in our economy in this city. The Mission, the Presidio, they give you a chance to visit colonial Spain when very few other cities in the entire nation still have that on offer. Mr. Mateo's right, this is an environmentally gorgeous place, but so is Pismo Beach. What makes us different and special is that historic downtown, it is the historic neighborhoods. We're making a living here off of heritage tourism. I mean, basically, that is kind of our bread and butter in this town. So it's completely vital and central to our economy. It's also been pointed out that it's vital to the residents, too. Brinkerhoff Historic District, the Bungalow Haven, some of these neighborhoods are so unique, and they have such interesting sort of little captures in history, like Victorian era, like the bungalows, the craftsmen-style houses. We would want to hold on to those and preserve those as long as possible because there is no place else that's like this. So yes, in my opinion, our historic resources are absolutely vital to our city, and they are what makes us Santa Barbara.
Thank you, Ms. Self.
Thank you. Well, I think I'm in agreement with everybody, almost everybody here, that our historic resources are a valuable part of our community. As has been mentioned, it is a major draw for tourists. And I want to thank the community for maintaining the character of our historic elements. I don't know if any of you have ever been to the Alamo. Oh my gosh, you can't even see the poor thing. And where we have maintained this openness that makes our historic elements in our city more visible, more enjoyable, you can appreciate what they are. And I think that is thanks to the community, who wouldn't tolerate anything else. I was recently talking to a woman from Spain, and she was just in awe of our town. And what she was saying, what she loved about it, what is so open, we could see the hills. And if you're on the hills, you can see the water, and that we don't have big buildings shadowing one another. And so I think, other than just the financial engine for our city, it's our quality of life. We would be much diminished personally if we didn't have these protected. And in the planned Santa Barbara, we were able to put a buffer around these historic elements that cannot be overdeveloped. That was an important tweak to the plan that we added.
Thank you. We'll move on to the second question. "What do you see as major threats to the preservation of the historic buildings and historic character of Santa Barbara?" I'll start with Ms. Falcone.
Well, when I was first on council, there were a number of projects that came through that caught the eye of the historic preservation community in particular because there were older buildings being demolished without having been assessed as to their historic quality, if there was a historic quality. And so, and I know that Ms. Naylor, and I think Mr. Sharp, and a number of other people in here, were actually on historic landmarks while, and the name of the actual program escapes me, but basically, it was guidelines and identification of structures prior to modification or demolition that needed to be evaluated. Now, this was a very controversial program. I was the chair of the ordinance committee at the time, and I remember it quite well. But we marshaled through guidelines and standards for analysis of buildings before they were modified as to whether or not they were, A, historic, or B, potentially historic, or not significant. And that went a long way. I don't think it ever made it through the entire city and needs to be completed. The historic element that's now being moved through as part of the general plan will go a long way toward helping the Historic Landmarks Committee and others to make sure that these guidelines that we started some eight or nine years ago come to fruition.
Thank you. Ms. Mario.
Thank you. Because of the recession and our tight budget in the city, public monies are limited to help with historic preservation. Nonprofits don't have the money they need. That would be the first thing. But what comes to mind, too, is the situation, there was a home on Mission Street near Gillespie recently where the homeowner had the right to build, add to the house, and remodel it on the outside in a way that stirred up the neighborhood because it was modernistic and used some sheet metal elements. And the neighbors, some of the neighbors, said that isn't exactly what the rest of the neighborhood looks like. And one of the things that was near that house was this big, old, beautiful house, perhaps it was in the Queen Anne style. And maybe we don't have enough of an inventory of beautiful, special homes that deserve some kind of recognition, or, I love those stone hitching posts that I, when I walk my dog, I see them, and there's these other street markers, they're obelisks or something, and I'd love to know more about them. The history just fascinates me. But we do need to have an inventory of every special little thing that hearkens back to our history so that we can, that would be the first way to protect them.
Thank you. Mr. Aldana.
As far as a major threat, I guess I would be coming up here with a planned Santa Barbara. I mean, that's why we have to plan everything out properly. You know, poor planning would be bad. And also, the density, where they put the high-density units, you know, so.
Thank you.
There we go.
Ms. Schwartz.
I think the threats that we all should be concerned about really will come from us letting down our guard, letting down our vigilance and our respect and our oversight as good stewards of these historic resources. If we go back to 1959, that's when El Pueblo Viejo was created. 1993, our City Historic Landmarks Commission was created, and I'm very pleased to see my friend and colleague, Farmina Murray, on the HLC who's here this evening, because it's these types of stewards, along with my close friend Sue Adams, who's also here this evening, and she's the president of the Pearl Chase Society, it's all of us together, both the city as a government and the nonprofits, and you, the community, making sure that we do not let down our watch and our care and the fact that this is going to continue to be a core value of the city. And I think only if we do that, then it will pose the greatest threat to respecting and preserving our historic resources.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz.
Can you repeat the question, Ms. Naylor, please?
"What do you see as the major threats to the preservation of the historic buildings and historic character of Santa Barbara?"
The general plan, and I think if we look at the Housing Development, Preservation and Program, Program 2123, 2126, 2127, and Housing Development and Preservation Program, we have to look at the management, the construction, and the administration aspect of it from a macro level to be able to scrutinize this, to see if it's conducive with the building or if it poses possible health and safety risk, public welfare risk in the future with high density, with things of that nature, which causes displacement of low-income, moderate working-class people from actually buying. And so that, in essence, creates a de-historification of it and changes sort of that value or that principle we're all trying to strive for.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you. The threats to historic preservation in Santa Barbara haven't significantly varied in 150 years. People have been worried about it for at least that long. Overdevelopment is always the main problem. Land in Santa Barbara is extremely valuable, and there's a great incentive for developers to build as much as possible on any given parcel. It's totally understandable, it's an economic pressure, and we as a city have consistently resisted that pressure. When we haven't, the results have not been great. And in every era, there are architectural fads, urban planning fads that come through, and it's very easy to lose sight of what it is that makes Santa Barbara different from other cities. That's the responsibility of the people of this city to make sure that doesn't happen, and the people who serve on the Historic Landmarks Commission, the people who serve volunteers on the Pearl Chase Society, all of these organizations are absolutely vital to publicizing the threats to historic preservation in Santa Barbara, because it's really the people of Santa Barbara over time, hasn't been the government so much. In fact, the government has sometimes been on the wrong side. But it's been the people of Santa Barbara who have done the most for historic preservation here.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse.
Well, I see historic preservation as both architectural and cultural. And I think sometimes when we have contrived in ersatz types of construction, that we try to plug into areas that were historically not that way, we get a cookie cutter look about us, it doesn't look real. And I think a classic example of a way we thought we would do what we thought was right was the whole Chapala Corridor. Well, that we developed that, and that turned out to be a great idea. I think whenever we try to build a town in order to determine a lifestyle as opposed to building a town that accommodates the lifestyle or helping develop slowly a town that accommodates our lifestyle, that we can make these mistakes, and we can end up in a quasi, not modernistic, but a cookie cutter world that doesn't recognize other types of architecture that have as much historical value as white plaster and red tile roofs. Because that's what this town has been, it's been a mixture of those things over the years. And we try to plug them in artificially, I think that can threaten not only our architectural heritage, but our cultural heritage and our neighborhood heritage as well. We were made up of various ethnic neighborhoods for years, and that's become more homogenized. So I think that's also a consideration.
Thank you. Ms. Byrne.
Threat to historic buildings in our town. I'm going to answer this one from a very personal perspective because oftentimes, the political is personal. I live in west downtown in the shadow of Chapala I and right around the corner from the Brinkerhoff Historic District. And around me are several buildings that were built in the 1890s to 1910s, mostly residential living quarters for low- and middle-income families. They're in a terrible state of disrepair because most of them are owned by Dario Peany. My neighborhood was zoned high-density, and because it's going to be zoned high-density in planned Santa Barbara, the value of that land just went up a lot. There'll be a lot of incentive to sell out, displace those families, and build more Chapala I's in that same area. Chapala I's vacant. The Andaluzes doing better on occupancy, but it's still not full. For me, watching those buildings be demolished, one of them is a 1920s gas station, by the way, that was built there, I guess, when there was no Highway 101, and Del Avina was a main drag in town. It's also in a terrible state of disrepair, and we can't get money to repair it. Even though there's a rehabilitation home loan program for historic homes, Dario's not going to apply for any of those anytime soon, and neither can the gentleman that owns the gas station. It saddens me to see a neighborhood like this where there are historic resources and they're not being protected and they're not being preserved, but they likely will be demolished for something else. That, to me, is the greatest threat to historic buildings in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Self.
Well, I'm going to bring up something from the general plan again, and it is strengthening the adaptive reuse of a building. And I hope we all understand what that is. We have an old building, and rather than tearing it down and building a new one, we try to modify the existing building. It has gone through a lot of scrutiny and has come to be the most environmentally friendly way to do it. Well, not too long ago, previous councils heard an appeal about the demolition of St. Francis. A major part of the appeal was on adaptive reuse. It had... adaptive reuse. It had been, it had a more modern facade, but the historic element of that building had never been touched. If they would have removed that facade, we would have a beautiful historic building preserved in our community. And it breaks my heart. It went to court. It's high-density now. And so by previous councils not understanding what preservation means and reusing things, I think that is of importance. And then, if I can squeeze this in, I love our committees and commissions. They spend a lot of time. But I think we, as council, maybe need to do more direction about them understanding their individual charters.
Thank you. Mr. Mateo.
I agree with a couple of things Ms. Self mentioned about the open space previously and what you just said now. You know, when you're writing a book, you have spaces in between the words. If you don't put the space in between the words, it's just a bunch of jumbled letters, and it doesn't make sense. When you're building a city, the same thing applies. You can't just go into a city and look and say, how many units can we fit in here? How do we juggle the parking? How do we convince people to walk to work? Blah, 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 blah. You can't do that. You have to take open space into consideration. You can't build so many buildings where you can't see the historic building next to it, or build something that doesn't coincide with it and makes a distraction. And then you don't have a beautiful city anymore. You have beautiful things, but they're hidden. You know, modifying buildings is a good idea. And I think we should take a serious look at modifying the police station. I know it's a big issue coming up, and everybody's really drumming for it. But you know what? They already put, they already got the 9/11 situation in a temporary home. It could be in a permanent home. If we need a new locker room, great. Let's do some outbuildings or something until we could get the old building fixed up and make it safe. We could do it for less than $50 million. We don't need to put the fear of God or a major earthquake. You know, I'd rather see $50 million be put into earthquake preparedness for everybody in the community, not just the police station.
Thank you. We have one more question before our break of 12 minutes, during which time we will gather questions from the audience. The third question is, many of our older residential neighborhoods are subject to quote-unquote "old zoning" that allow much more intense development than what exists. Would you be willing to reexamine the zoning in order to protect the character of these neighborhoods and their historic streetscapes? I'll start with Ms. Murillo.
I think we have been looking at zoning already through an extensive general plan process. I was at the very first public workshop in Casa de la Raza back in 2005 or 2006. And the public has reviewed zoning issues. The Planning Commission has as well. A lot of community groups with special interests related to density, related to historical preservation. But I'm always open to knowing more. If people have new ideas, perhaps that's what your, your question is suggesting. And when I'm elected, I will have an open-door policy and an open mind on new issues that might come up. And I really do value our older downtown neighborhoods. I live in one. I'm on the west side of Santa Barbara. And I value the urban experience that I have. I love being close to my neighbors. I love smelling their dinner as I walk by with my dog. And I am just somebody who embraces that kind of neighborhood and that kind of closeness with the people I'm sharing my life with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Aldana.
Yes, the older residential areas, they should be respected. And that's why I keep on talking about the high-density, because it worries me, especially with the, on the west side, lower west side, and the east side. Because if they could be restored a little bit, that'd be nice. But I just feel the high-density is just going to ruin them. And at the same token, they're already congested. And we're just going to be more congested. It doesn't make any sense to me.
Thank you. Ms. Schwartz.
As a planning commissioner, and on a regular basis, we wrestle with this contrast, this tension between our zoning ordinances, our zoning design, in a sense, and almost every project that comes to us. Because we're a 161-year-old city with zoning constraints that really don't conform to the uniqueness of individual properties and individualized neighborhoods, whether these are older residential neighborhoods, and even some neighborhoods right in our downtown core. So I would be in support of continuing to take a fresh look at our zoning, to see what works best in preserving older neighborhoods, and also allowing some new development or redevelopment where it's sensitive and appropriate for those neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz.
I think the characteristics of the east and west neighborhoods of Santa Barbara are very important to redevelop, like Schwartz says. I've been saying that now that we focused on the CCRPA zone since the 1970s and produce, maybe until the end of 2019, $454 million of tax increment revenue. It's going to expire. People here on this diet, it's going to have to take the future leadership to create a new autonomous board. One of those components could be historic preservation. Also redevelopment of neighborhoods, now that we've invested in the commerce and the business corridor, to really preserve the fabric, this health and safety, and the general welfare for everybody in that location. And one component of the zoning is to look at it and start redefining what doesn't work and make it more efficient. A little conference consortium where they could update the zoning ordinances, because some of the languages could be burdensome for construction.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
Ms. Naylor, could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Many of our older residential neighborhoods are subject to quote-unquote "old zoning" that allows much more intense development than what exists. Would you be willing to reexamine the zoning in order to protect the character of these neighborhoods and their historic streetscapes?
I would be more than willing. The problem is there are neighborhoods, and the Bungalow Haven is a good example, there are neighborhoods that are often zoned R2, even R3, that historically have been small, single-family homes. And the people in those neighborhoods obviously want to continue with that. I've actually discussed this with Mayor Schneider, and we agreed that as soon as we get the general plan put to bed, one of the next issues on our plate should be extending the purview of the Single Family Design Board to the R2 zones. And particularly in the areas, as I said, where it's mostly single-family dwellings. If the Single Family Design Board is involved in this, this will give us, give those neighborhoods the protection of the laboriously conceived and finely enacted neighborhood preservation ordinance. And I think that would be the best protection possible for those residential areas.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse.
Well, we've been talking up-zoning the whole time as council. Now we could talk about down-zoning. Cool. I think that every situation deserves its own life and has its own character. And there's not a blanket policy that fits coming out of City Hall that's going to work for every single neighborhood and every single situation. Yes, I'd be completely willing to come to the table and talk about zoning in specific circumstances for specific neighborhoods. It's when we get into looking at a map as opposed to being out with the neighborhood groups and trying to make decisions about that without their input, that we get into areas of design that don't fit into what people want to have in their neighborhoods, or the kind of characters they'd like to, characteristics they'd like to preserve. So I think a case-by-case approach and complete, not autonomy necessary, but complete neighborhood input, neighborhood associations, that the council goes to as opposed to them having to come to us, we make decisions like this. So that we're not laying, doing an overlay of a density plan that doesn't necessarily meet the needs of that specific neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Byrne.
I actually support the idea, too, of going to re-look at densities in neighborhoods, particularly the R2 zones. I know the Upper East Side, I used to live up on Ariaga Street, is zoned R2. And there were a lot of neighbors that had really lovely craftsmen that were dismayed to see granny units go up in people's yards, or they were upset that there was an apartment that was made out of a garage, things like that. But it was allowed in that zoning. I think Mr. Rouse has hit on something, and I support it, being a strong neighborhood advocate. I think actually the neighborhood itself is in the best determination spot to decide what it wants to do for itself, whether it wants to stay single-family and how it would make that determination. We know that there are strong neighborhood associations in the city. We, as candidates, have been talking to quite a few of them. But I'm actually working with two of them myself on a day-to-day basis. Those neighborhoods know what they want for their area. And if they like being single-family, so be it. We should look at zoning as appropriate for what the neighbors want to do in their area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Self.
Yes, I think preserving neighborhoods is important. And I would certainly consider down-zoning. Oddly enough, the adoption of the general plan as it is now, it's got more steps to go through. It's not done. But we have effectively down-zoned many of the residential areas. They said by about 20%. And I do think neighborhoods, you guys get up and speak, and we love it. And so getting your involvement there. And in the general plan, a question I never got answered, maybe I need to press it again. They said they were moving over 100 restrictions to development. So I asked for specifics, and I was sent a document this thick to compare to one this thick. And so since, you know, I would, I would just like the specifics on that. Because again, we're talking about quality of life. Also in the general plan, and I say this is making up-zoning everybody, is they want to reduce restrictions for granny units. You don't have to have a parking place. You don't need as much open space. You don't need as much setbacks. And so, in fact, in the plan, it says if your neighbor can't afford cramming something in his property right next to you, the city will loan him money to do it. I don't think that's going to fly. But it's suggested. And I find that very difficult.
Thank you. Mr. Mateo.
Yes. You know, this has to do with balance. You know, you have the person's right to build what they want on their property, do what they want on their property, yet also have the responsibility to the rest of the people in your community. Now, if you're in a historic community where every single building is a historic building, well, you're not going to put something in that community like on Gillespie Street. It just won't fit. But you know, Santa Barbara's also an artistic community. We were at the Marjorie Luke for the artist forum. And, you know, Santa Barbara itself is a work of art. It really is. It's a beautiful work of art. And, you know, we have a lot of artists that do some creative architectures. And so a building like on Gillespie Street is a unique piece because it says what the builder wants to build. And there's places for that, you know. And you may have an historic-looking building, yet this is an eclectic neighborhood as well. So you have to allow for that expression of creativity when you come to your building, but do it in an appropriate way. I believe that we should be strict with the zonings to keep things small, because I know people aren't going to build small. They're going to build big. Nobody builds small. And I'll ditto what Randy Rouse says. You have to do it by a case-by-case approach. That's the best way to go about it.
Thank you. Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. I understand the question is, would I be in favor of looking at zoning in older neighborhoods in order to protect the neighborhood character as it exists today and maybe has existed for some time? The answer is yes.
Yes.
Absolutely. Back in the 70s, we all remember the down-zoning, the major down-zoning that happened as a vote of the people that was in order to live within our resources. That was a major event in this area, probably unprecedented in maybe anywhere else. And I know that there are some people in this room who were actually part of that. Mary Louise. And then you have various different neighborhoods that have come together and really forwarded the special uniqueness of their, of their, of their character. The Bungalow Haven neighborhood is one of them. The Brinkerhoff neighborhood is another. And there are others that have, have made these moves toward. So that, that is very important, that the city then recognize. One has to be very careful not to just do what the whimsical, you know, the whims of the neighbors, because neighbors change. People change. Things evolve. However, organizations such as CPA, such as the Pearl Chase Society, such as the Conservancy, that go on and exist generation after generation, and decade after decade, that are looking at the city as a whole, I think those are the organizations that really bring to the front what neighborhoods, what areas, in terms of zoning, oh dear. Time again. I'm so sorry. But there's a lot to talk about. I apologize.
Thank you. We're now going to take a break, 12 minutes. If you have any questions you'd like to submit for the candidates, all of the candidates, please raise your hand to catch the attention of our volunteers. Thank you. We're going to begin the second half of our forum. But I would like to mention that the Santa Barbara Conservancy has posters and books for sale at the rear of the room. I'd like to thank our audience for submitting these thoughtful questions. It's clear we won't have time to use all of your questions, but we do encourage you to approach any candidate tonight after the forum with questions regarding historic preservation and resources. We'll start with the same format and rotation. The first audience question is, several candidates have talked of the importance of the public's input in the preservation process and its role in watchdogging the decision-makers. How can city council make this easier for us, such as making appeals fees less costly and reimbursable for the prevailing appellant? Please ask me to read it again if you need it.
Yes, sir.
Let's try this again. Several candidates have talked about the importance of the public's input in the preservation process and its role in watchdogging the decision-makers. How can the city council make this easier for us, such as making appeals fees less costly and reimbursables for the prevailing appellant? I'm sorry, but Mr. Aldana, you're first.
Lucky me. Well, we would have to find a way to streamline the system. Just make things easier for people to, you know, get permits and, and stuff like that.
Thank you. Ms. Schwartz.
The feedback I've received from voters really underscores my own observations. And that's that notification of residents needs to be enhanced so that there's a better understanding of neighborhood impacts as they are making their way through the city processes. So I'd be looking to really enhance that to make sure that the public is fully aware of what could be decided that has impacts for them. Additionally, the meeting location and times for the city is really at the convenience currently of city electeds and city staff. And this is, this is your government. So one of my strong positions and an initiative that I would undertake is looking with our city administrator and our city attorney to hold more of our meetings, including those that have neighborhood impacts out into the neighborhoods, so that those who cannot make it to City Hall on Tuesdays at 2:00 p.m. have an opportunity to voice their interests and concerns and really participate in government. And I think that's a very important starting place.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz.
I think if we implemented district-based elections, neighborhood characteristics would be preserved and historified. I think if, looking back in hindsight, a lot of property rights have gone up to the city council. And it's on preferential, aesthetic preference building, and not on code and zoning. And so having oversight and streamlining, like Mr. Aldana said, the zoning is very important because then they would preserve the neighborhood characteristics. And if we had district-based elections, we would hold our county representatives accountable. So remember, district-based elections out there, that's... So remember, district-based elections out there, that's listening.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
Ms. Naylor, could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Several candidates have talked of the importance of the public's input in the preservation process and its role in watchdogging the decision-makers. How can the city council make this easier for us, such as making appeals fees less costly and reimbursable for the prevailing appellant?
Well, I think what city council needs to do is show leadership in this area. There's, I was just talking with someone in the audience about this very subject. It's partly, it's a question of turf sometimes. The historic resources element is an excellent example of that, because we have people in Santa Barbara who are some of the most knowledgeable people about historic preservation in the United States, who were offering to work on the historic resources element, to write the historic resources element, and yet there was resistance within staff against that idea. So it's a question of leadership. We need leadership in the community development department, and in particular in the area of appeals, we need to make sure that staff understands that the appellants deserve the same support, access to the same knowledge as the applicant. Typically, that's how things break down. Just partly because of human dynamics, because our planning staff works so closely with the people who are developing projects, they tend to become allies of those people, forgetting that they have an equal duty to represent the people in the neighborhood who may not be happy about a particular development. And yes, of course, people who prevail in appeal have their appeal fees refunded. That's only right.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse.
You know, public input is a lot more important to us than a lot of people realize, and public input isn't always just for those who can make it to the chamber when we're meeting or to come and lobby us individual in the offices. Now, my idea would be to have some specifically formed neighborhood groups and recognized neighborhood groups, and be able to go out into these areas and triage these problems in a kind of liaison fashion prior to getting all the way into council with them. These appeals can be expensive, they're usually really contentious, and sometimes if we can do some of the legwork outside of council chambers, we could save everybody a lot of angst and a lot of time. And yes, I do agree that the appeal fee should be refunded if the appeal is successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Byrne.
I like the idea of reduced or refund of fees for the winning person in the appellant situation. I too sympathize with people who appeal. I've appealed a few things myself and been on the losing end at least four times now. And I also would say that there was one time in particular I went with a group from the east side that lost an appeal, and the lead person on the appeal said, every time I come to this building, meaning City Hall, I get screwed. I need to learn to quit coming here. So there's something in our process that tends to lock people out of wanting, even when you are watchdogging, you try to participate, there is something that kind of makes you feel like it's a bitter pill at the end. One thing that I think would be really helpful is that sometimes you only get notices of things that are going to happen. If you're in a 300-foot or 500-foot range, why not make it a 1,000-foot range? Also, there's a problem with the way we notice things. Think about it like this, if I send you a notice that says vaguely interesting opportunity for plastic and fabric enclosures for your feet, is that going to get you interested, or is Nike shoes on sale here going to mean something more relevant to you? Sometimes the way we notice things is, it absolutely puts the public to sleep. If we were to say something like, there's a building coming in at this corner, maybe you ought to come to this appeal and look at it versus particularly noxious land use element going in your neighborhood, I think it would wake people up a lot faster. So I'd like to see us do a little better on our messaging than we do today.
Thank you. Ms. Self.
I think Mr. Rouse has a great idea that can get legs on council. Being in a neighborhood that was really unhappy what was going on, I know what it's like not to be listened to, that's why I'm here now. I felt the need. Now, two years ago, when we were going through the fee structure and what was to be raised, it was proposed that there be a $3,000 deposit for an appeal, and I get this information showing that even a minor appeal was costing $15,000. So it said deposit, that means you're going to be billed for the rest. So I called all the community people I knew, and they showed up at the finance committee, and so it got raised $50. So it's now about $500. I believe it should be refundable for prevailing projects. And one of the things about evening meetings is that we had the plan discussed on an evening meeting. Nobody showed up, there was nobody, just staff. And so if there is an appeal, we always, we usually put that at 6 o'clock so that people can get there, but believe me, you don't want to come to all those meetings and sit through it, because a lot of it is just so routine and it's not of interest. So if it is of interest, we do try to put it later. One of the things I have said is that staff should not give a recommendation. We should be given all parts of the information, and we can make the decision. And then noticing is, she's right on there, when we got the 28 bulb bouts, the noticing said 100 West Annapaw Moon.
Ms. Self. Mr. Mateo.
Thank you. I believe in an ounce of prevention, you know, when you're talking about appeals, that something already went into litigation is very expensive. So I believe like in the Brown Act, you know, get the public involved in major projects' decision-making. You know, if the city made its announcements more user-friendly, community-friendly, and let them know what's going on, like for a major project, somebody's wanting to build something that's going to affect this whole neighborhood, not just somebody within 1,000 feet or 2,000 feet, but literally the whole block sometimes, people need to know. And to get a meeting set up in a location where everybody could, in a time where everybody could make it, who has a vested interest in it, they could discuss things in an open forum and save a lot of aggravation rather than somebody complaining about something and bringing it up for an appeal. So I think proper planning like that would be helpful, and if it has to go into litigation, well, then, you know, the appeal process, I guess it's working now, probably is sufficient.
Thank you. Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. Public input as watchdog. Well, I think that, first of all, I would support an alms-budsmen type of a service inside planning, so that people have more of a personal experience, that they have a certainty with respect to rules, that they actually have someone of consistency that they can work with. The other part of this is who is appointed to the boards and commissions is of absolute vital fundamental importance. We must have people who respect and have understanding and have deep knowledge, but we also need to make sure that, we keep Santa Barbara's, and the theme tonight, what makes Santa Barbara Santa Barbara, and what makes Santa Barbara, all these various processes that we have. Now, noticing is something that I have worked on and gotten expanded in the past, and very often it goes, the notice which cannot be biased in one way or another, goes to a land owner pursuant to the property roles. Now, sometimes that's an absentee, sometimes it's a general manager, and the people don't even really know what's going on. So between those various things, the appeal costs are actually currently quite low. Now, you bring in all your experts and your lawyers and everything else, that's what drives up the cost. The actual cost of filing an appeal is low. Should it be reimbursed? Okay. Or forgiven? Okay. But what about all the rest of the collateral costs, which is where the real money is?
Thank you. Ms. Maria.
One of my initiatives is to create small-scale neighborhood associations across the city, because people need to decide for themselves in their own neighborhood what their issues are. It might be land use, it might be appealing projects, it could be garden exchange, or crime prevention, or neighborhood watch. And I see that as a way to organize people. In terms of the appeals fees, I do not think that we should reduce the fees or give them back to the prevailing party. That is the community development department, which is funded through the general fund, and we are struggling right now with every dollar in the general fund. I'm an advocate for restoring funding for our libraries and our parks. I value our police function, and that, I'm not taking money away from that. And some of the appeals may prevail, and some of them may be frivolous. So we really have to take that into consideration as well. I'm conservative with our public treasury, and we need to protect every dollar coming in. And finally, I am not anti-government. I hear that from some candidates, you know, City Hall's a bad place. I respect our staff, I respect our processes, I respect our regulations, I respect that we have control over signage. Some people make fun of, oh, the sign committee, this, 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 but Santa Barbara looks the way it looks because we don't have neon signs, we control what it looks like, we don't have billboards. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maria. The second audience question is, part of a thriving and sustainable city economy is a young professional presence. How can we make it possible for young professionals and others to afford to live in Santa Barbara while being sensitive to historic preservation? I'm going to start with Ms. Schwartz.
Well, I've spoken about this very important topic at some of the other candidate forums, because to the extent that our businesses do not encourage and cannot retain this workforce, the vibrancy of Santa Barbara is at stake. And I think that all demographics and all age groups in Santa Barbara who I've been speaking with do cherish the special diversity and the special beauty of Santa Barbara. The question is, how do we continue to support Santa Barbara from policymaking perspectives to encourage and make this a place where everybody's welcome? That means every demographic, it means every age group, it means those who are still young in their lives and wanting to raise families here, to our seniors who are looking to retire here. So on a professional front, I think it's critical that we reach out to the private sector, and I said this at last Wednesday's business forum, to be better partners with the business sector, because they are the ones currently attracting, and they are the ones able to pay the good wages that are going to nurture our young professionals. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. I think that's a very important question. I think the general plan contemplates that very issue. Keeping young professionals here is really being creative with their planning, really, you know, the whole idea with Built Out, well, we have to build up reasonably and equitably, not condominiums, not upper housing, because that takes away from junior professionals, young professionals, getting the investment to make a down payment for a home. We definitely have to look at redeveloping the east and west communities through the RDA program, 2125, 2611. Why? Because by implementing these goals, the RDA stimulates new job opportunities as well as new cultural, retail, recreational, and housing activities in our city. So by developing affordable, equitable housing, then our housing stock will increase, and then we'll have opportunities for young professionals to stay in Santa Barbara and keep Santa Barbara locals for locals.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
We have to be realistic about city government's ability to engineer the demographics of the city. The demographics come first, the government comes second. And Santa Barbara's unique, it's not like any other city. Certainly, we have similarities, but I can tell you, as a once upon a time young professional graduating from UCSB back in 1987, there were very few people in my graduating class who stayed in Santa Barbara, and that wasn't because of zoning, and it wasn't because of any of that, it was because the job opportunities weren't here. And the reason the job opportunities weren't here was because we live in a very geographically constrained location. There were a lot of job opportunities in the Bay Area where land was cheap and it was easy to build. The things that have made Santa Barbara unique and the things that people treasure about it essentially rule out large-scale industrial parks. We're not going to have those anytime soon. We don't have a huge finance sector here. We have to be realistic about what this city is, and the idea that somehow by simply changing zoning, we could create a massive demographic change in Santa Barbara is simply not realistic. I think Santa Barbara is a welcoming city. I know a lot of people who love this city and who somehow have contrived to make a living here, and we'll just have to be realistic about that.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse.
I'm one of those guys who contrived to make a living here. I graduated from UCSB in the mid-'70s, the job market was very similar to the way it is now. And of course, being a geography major probably didn't help matters any, but I created my own job. My son just graduated from USC this last spring, but he didn't move back to Santa Barbara because it was too expensive to live here, he stayed down in LA because that's where there were jobs. And I'm going to agree with both Ms. Schwartz and Mr. Francisco, see how this works. We need, we need to attract industry by being more friendly to industry. We put people through so many hoops to develop anything in this town, to create the kind of jobs that are going to pay the salaries, that are the targets of these plans to have affordable housing. The affordable housing thresholds aren't affordable to anybody's imagination in this room. We've kind of given up and gone to rental housing. Well, that's great, but if we're going to retain people in this town that are going to have reasonable salaries, we're going to have to need jobs here first. Now, that sounds great, that's a great soundbite, I don't know exactly how we do it, but we have to stop being so resistant to companies coming into town, like Deckers, or like, oh gosh, what's the internet company down in Carp now? Yeah, Lynda.com. I mean, there's opportunities out there that we seem to be missing from time to time. We need to attract those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Byrne.
Well, I am one of those young professionals. I'm 43 now, but I moved here when I was 30, and I moved here with the high-tech sector. There was actually kind of a bustling little high-tech sector here, and that's a great business to have, because really all you need is a laptop and a cell phone and some engineers, and you're in business. You don't need a factory floor, you don't need restaurant infrastructure, you don't need inventory or anything. It's a very easy way to start a business. But the reason the high-tech sector's not thriving here has nothing to do with Santa Barbara, it has everything to do with the economy. It tanked, and it's really hard to get venture capital to start up another internet sector, you know, organization. It's really hard to do that right now. The only places that that stuff's available is Austin, Dallas, San Jose, New York. And so there's not going to be a whole lot we're going to do to start one of those up here, unless the city wants to get involved in something like that. It's a hard thing to do at the city level. The state is really causing us a lot of heartburn in this. I would also say this, that there are other industries that we could look at attracting here. I know this is kind of a bad word right now in industry, but green energy, that's another easy company to start up, as long as you don't need your manufacturing sector here. Again, you could use some of your office space. But we do have to be realistic about our ability or inability and what we have on offer in terms of creating jobs. We just don't have office parks, factory floors, and a lot of other things you need to stimulate the economy locally. It's just kind of, it is life.
Thank you. Ms. Self.
California is not business-friendly. We get the statistics all the time about the moving to your home state of Texas, because it is welcoming. And one of the ways we can maintain a lower-priced housing stock is by not destroying our older neighborhoods and building great big projects. Sheila Lodge, who has endorsed me, did some research on this, I did some, and it's on my website, I hope you'll go there. On Milpus Street, the architects did a charrette and gave us information. So on Milpus, you can buy at almost $500,000 a 600 to 900-foot condo, plus homeowners' fees, okay? Our middle-class income can support 250. So, and when you have neighboring communities which, with much less housing cost, are you going to forego the dog, the piano, the things that would fit in a normal living residence? This is why, you know, it's hard for people to stay here, and we don't have a lot of jobs, we're basically a service industry, tourism, restaurants, and that sort of thing, and they aren't high-paying jobs. And so, you know, if even Kentucky Fried Chicken is thinking of putting their corporate offices in Texas, that ought to be a wake-up call for the state.
Thank you. Mr. Mateo.
For anybody to afford to live in Santa Barbara, not just young professionals, you know, we can't just focus on affordable housing, how they design the box so somebody could afford to live in it. We need to focus on the economic structure of the We need to focus on the economic structure of the jobs in this community, what kind of businesses we bring in, what kind of businesses should we support to bring into this town. You know, we have highly educated people coming from UCSB. We have companies that are out in Galena. Now, you know, I was here living in Santa Barbara when Galena was still part of Santa Barbara, not Galena, you know? I mean, it doesn't mean just because they have their own border, doesn't mean that we can't coordinate with the city of Galena and say, look, you have some businesses there, you know, let's network and see where we could get our smart people hooked up with these companies here. And in your town, you know, if you could afford to live in Santa Barbara and you're making a decent wage, do you want to live in a little apartment? I don't think so. Eventually, you're going to want to have a house of your own. So we have to weigh a lot of things here. We can't just give it in a short minute-and-a-half answer, but we do have to look at establishing a viable economic structure. We have to look at the city budget, we have to look and see how we're providing people good jobs or good job opportunities. There's a whole bunch of things that we have to look at, not just one or two. We have to make the city affordable to live in by creating better jobs.
Thank you. Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. I think the question was, how do we keep a young professional presence that we've been losing rapidly over the last couple of decades while being sensitive to historic preservation? And at the end of the day, really, UCSB has been turning out and is an economic factory for small businesses of all sorts. The issue is, is that these are young professionals. These are not people who've made their livings and will ultimately be able to get into the market. It is all about housing. We've had a number of very large businesses leave for places that have no taxes, like Texas and Florida and various, and they've taken their workforce with them. It really is about protecting the middle class. It really is about making sure that folks have an opportunity, that there's an opportunity, if you want it, not saying we can house everybody, that's just a silly thing to say, but that there's an opportunity, that if you want it, you can access a housing opportunity to start, to get your foothold, to build your business, to be located here in Santa Barbara. I've always worked very, very hard for that. One of the things that happened back in the day was that in order to make the businesses come into the State Street area, a lot of those small bungalows were turned into commercial buildings. I had an office in one. Many people have offices in one. Do we want to look at some of that and maybe turn some of that lost housing stock back into housing, thereby protecting those historic structures?
Thank you. Ms. Maria.
Would you repeat the question, please?
Yes. Part of a thriving and sustainable city economy is a young professional presence. How can we make it possible for young professionals and others to afford to live in Santa Barbara while being sensitive to historic preservation?
I think at the heart of that question really is the housing question. And we need a certain kind of housing in Santa Barbara that I think our housing developers are willing to give us if we demand it and if we hold them to the standards and to the parameters that we really need. And my perspective is that people of my generation understand there isn't new land, especially in Santa Barbara. I know people who raise families in two-bedroom apartments and in condominiums. Another reason why I should be elected to the city council, because I'm in touch with working-class people, people who love Santa Barbara so much that they rent, they'll be renters forever, like myself unless I win the lottery. I never had children because I made a decision, there was too many children on earth. Consequently, I'm able to work with youth. That's one of my qualifications, too, is I'm a youth development specialist and an advocate. So what I'm saying is, there are people who will live in townhomes and condominiums, and as long as it's a decent place to live and they have a little patch of land to do some gardening, they're going to be okay in Santa Barbara because it's about Santa Barbara. It's not about wealth. I mean, that's where I'm coming from. And those are the kind of housing and transportation policies that I will put forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aldana.
Okay. Well, for one, there's, you know, as we know, there's no jobs, rent is high, and what does work here is students and tourism. But getting back to the young professionals, let's just say entrepreneurs, just as they have low housing and affordable housing, maybe there could be some property owners out there to try something and maybe give them some, let's just say, some type of tax incentive if they would try a low and affordable commercial space. So then this way, the young professionals can start up their business.
Thank you.
Okay.
The third audience question is, what are the positives and the negatives of the city creating more historic designations, landmark districts, and historic districts? I'm going to start with Mr. Cruz.
I think it basically challenged and confronts the fact that we become fearful and to take the leadership in building. We definitely need to take the courage and the leadership to creatively build, but build reasonably.
Thank you. Mr. Francisco.
Hmm, negatives. I suppose the negative is that once a district is designated a historic district, you can't build just anything you like there. But everything about it, in my, from my view, is positive. It takes time to designate an area historic district, and it's a lot of work. I think that the city has finally taken a step in the right direction by adding a historic resources element to the general plan. Another idea that has been suggested is a permanent office for a city historian outside of community development, being part of City Hall. I think there needs to be that independent and objective voice looking at historic preservation throughout the city. So I fully support the idea of creating more historic districts. We have, we certainly have the neighborhoods and areas within Santa Barbara that are suited to that. And I think it will be, in the long run, it will be part of the legacy of Santa Barbara, and it's what we should be doing.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse.
Yeah, I have to agree with Mr. Francisco. As I think about this, I look over at Mary Louise Days and think about Sheila Lodge as well, as they still draft this historic resource element in our general plan. But I think also, what is an historic resource? Is it just architectural? Is it biological? Is it cultural? I think those definitions need to be made as well. Certainly, the restrictions that you put on land and land ownership are going to come to bear. And so I guess the negatives would be, yes, you might have a piece of land that would be appropriate for the kind of development, but suddenly it's an historical district and nothing can happen or nothing that has a community positive can happen. But the positives would be that you wouldn't end up with some unintended consequences like we have in the past as we've tried to develop whatever things we thought were working at the time. Mixed use is one of my favorite terms when it comes to that. So I think the consideration of historical character as well as cultural, and when I think about cultural, I'll go back to the ethnic neighborhoods. When we had a Chinatown, an Italian district, we had different parts of town that had cultural elements to them. And I'm hoping that gets involved in the historic element part of our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Byrne.
Well, as far as negatives, I can't think, well, Wanda may yell at me after this is over, I can't think of too many negatives. But I would say on the positive side, wow, lots of positives. First of all, we have an awful lot of inventory in the city, as I talked about earlier, in my neighborhood and some of the neighborhoods on the east side, we have a lot of older houses. It would be great, actually, if we could rehabilitate and restore some of them, seal them off, and call them a historic district. You want to talk about a job creator? That's a good one. In construction, rehabilitating houses, being a specialized carpenter, a specialized stonemason, a specialized tile fitter that works with historic properties, is a higher wage-earning job than a regular construction job. So these are better jobs, longer-term jobs, higher-paying jobs, more stable over time. I love the idea of doing more historic district work as well because, I don't know if you know, but United Stateswide, new construction generates 24% of the waste that goes into municipal landfills. So if you want a way to stop sending stuff to the landfill, do rehabilitation projects in historic districts, it's a way better deal. At the same time, historic districts, when we work on them, they raise the value of property over time gradually. I think it's a lot better than some of the new development that gets proposed. And in particular, they strengthen neighborhoods. Brinkerhoff is pretty much iron in terms of their will because their district is just so tight, they've all worked so hard for it. So I think there's tremendous positives to more historic districts in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Self.
The negatives, well, if this was an AIA meeting, the architectural industry, I bet they could come up with a bunch of them. But I think I really would like to see more designations and as Mr. Francisco has brought up, and as Mary Louise Days could attest to, there's a lot of time and energy that goes into that. And as far as rehabilitating old homes, we do have a loan program for people of low income to rehabilitate their homes at a very low interest rate. And actually, nobody's using it right now. But, you know, we're in bad economic times. And I'm not so sure that the city wouldn't be better off hiring a consultant for the historic, to make historic decisions. Because there's a great deal of pressure to bear from inside the planning department when they want a project done. And so you see wavering in the wrong way, that's not, these historic elements aren't given the protection that is intended through this position. And, but we definitely need that position filled one way or the other. And...
Ms. Self, I'm sorry, I'm going to cut you off.
Whoops, sorry!
It's all right. Mr. Mateo.
Yes, I think preserving the old homes is a good idea and having more neighborhoods. If it's a neighborhood, it's great. If it's an individual home, that's great. I don't see any negatives at all. I think that's a perceptual thing from somebody who's just not willing to see the opportunities. I mean, you know, not everybody who comes to Santa Barbara, whether to visit or live here, comes here to be entertained by the touristy things. I would say the majority of people come here to get away from it all. And to keep it picturesque, that's what Santa Barbara's about, that's what this whole meeting here is about, you know? How do we keep it uniquely Santa Barbara? You know? It would increase property values if you keep it small or unique or original because then people say, yes, I lived in that district of Santa Barbara where all the homes are just like they were, you know, so many years ago. This is what you want to see when you come to Santa Barbara. This is what makes Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara. This is the character. The houses you live in are a reflection of who you are and says a lot about the community when you keep it picturesque like this. And so that's why I would say, more the better. Let's make it a unique place to live in, for people to see and visit. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Ms. Falcone.
Thank you. Everything in life, I mean, it's a basic law of physics, that everything, every action has an equal and opposite reaction. So for every positive, there will be some kind of negative consequence, whether you want to admit to it or not. So, that being said, it's very difficult, actually, to determine what is historic because, as I said before, Santa Barbara has so many layers, so many layers over 200-plus years. What point in time do you point to? Now, we have done a lot, and sometimes there's a cohesiveness that you can see in the bungalow district, for one, the Brinkerhoff, but those are two very different periods of time. Presidio is yet again a different period of time. You want to designate the Chumash, then we go back to, you know, Rocks on the Riviera. So what are we doing? And exactly how do we do that? It's not as simple as just, oh, yeah, there's all these positives and no negatives. Everything has a negative. And if we're going to do it, we have to be realistic, we have to be systematic, and we have to be very careful about doing it. And I'm all in favor of exploring it. In fact, as I said before, under my tenure, and it took many years, to do the initial design guidelines for what is historic, what is potential, and what may be significant. And that's where this historic element in the general plan actually got its roots and its legs. So we need to continue that, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Maria.
The positives are that the Bungalow Haven group, for instance, is organized, they have pride in their community, and they're a watchdog on the St. Francis Hospital, now Cottage Hospital, project, which needs watchdogging. Just recently, they reduced the number of commercial signs that were there. In terms of Brinkerhoff, they're organized. They wanted to change how the parking was done on their street. They got that done. So that's a positive, that it draws people together and it leads to community activism. The negative is that if you have too many designations, you might dilute the specialness of each one, and some neighborhoods may not be valued. I come from the west side, we get not as much TLC as we should, so I would be keeping an eye out for that. I'm confident the city can maintain a balance in these matters, and I'm confident that I can make decisions that are balanced when these kinds of projects or issues come to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aldana.
Okay. Well, the positive would be that the neighborhood would be preserved, restored, and fresh and beautiful, which I think everybody would want. The negative would be if you had a piece of land and maybe you won't be able to build what you want to build, you know, like a big home or something, but you'll just have to build just what's in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Ms. Schwartz.
Our historic and cultural resources are nestled within every neighborhood of Santa Barbara. And what I have heard from voters is that they do not want top-down decisions made by their elected officials that have significant impacts to them and their neighborhoods. So when we talk about public input and public feedback, that's critical to your elected officials being respectful of and being sensitive to what these individual neighborhood experiences are. And I think balance is a key word, and I think responsible is a key word. In other words, I think we have the responsibility to reach out to the various neighborhoods to get that input. And once we have that, to then show that we can make sensible and sensible decisions as it pertains to those neighborhoods. And we see many of you here this evening, Brinkerhoff, Bungalow Haven, and others. And I think that needs to be a more integrated part of policymaking, and I intend to bring that to the city council should I be elected in November. Thank you.
Thank you. We don't have time for a fourth question, though. We were hoping to have that happen. And I'll ask one of the Conservancy members to confirm that. As far as I know, I don't think we have time for the fourth. So I would like to thank everyone for your questions. I had a doozy for the fourth, which is unfortunate, I may not use it.
You can tell us later.
Yeah. We now ask each candidate for a closing statement. You will each have one minute to make your remarks. Let's stay with the same rotation we've been using, so I'll start with Mr. Francisco.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's been a pleasure for me, serving on the city council for the last four years. It's been a pleasure for me to serve on the Pearl Chase Society Preservation Committee, and that's given me a lot of insight into the importance of our historic neighborhoods and our historic buildings in Santa Barbara. I've learned, I think, from the masters and the mistresses. And part of what brought me to City Hall in the first place was my concern about neighborhoods that I thought were being impinged upon by overdevelopment. Part of the reason I'm running for office again, and the reason that I want to serve the people in this room and the people of this city for another four years, is because of my love of this city, my love of its historic characteristics, and my promise to all of you that I will do everything possible to preserve that history during my next four years on council. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Rouse.
I'm absolutely sincere when I talk about neighborhood...
I'm absolutely sincere when I talk about neighborhood input and the amount of weight it carries with council members. And my plan is to develop not only just outreach, but actually some autonomous groups within neighborhoods that we'll have on a regular basis, where we can have liaison service and get a lot of this work done out in the neighborhoods where it belongs. Because like Mr. Francisco, I saw a lot of abuses in neighborhoods from either the lack of attention from central City Hall or from mandates that came out of City Hall that didn't necessarily relate to what those specific neighborhoods wanted. So, to see a group like this tonight, and knowing that you're here, to be involved and that you care is very gratifying, because once again, it's your input that weighs the most when we make a decision at City Hall, or should. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Byrne.
Santa Barbara is a beautiful treasure. It's a jewel on the central coast. It is the only city in all of California that looks like this, feels like this, and the only other way to experience the kind of ambiance and history we have is to go get on a plane and go to the Italian Riviera, or the Spanish Riviera, or the French Riviera. You don't have to change languages, and the food is better here. So, it's really delightful to be able to live in a place like this and for people to be able to come here and appreciate it and have it be in America and have it be accessible to all of us. I'm delighted that there's groups like the Pearl Chase Society and the Santa Barbara Historical Society, and I'm so glad for the Santa Barbara Conservancy to pull them all together and work so hard to restore and preserve and protect what is the most important thing about this city, and that is our history. Yes, we have the natural beauty, but we wouldn't be who we are if we didn't have our historic resources in place, preserved, and hopefully even furthered. It's very important to me, and should I get to serve on council, believe me, I'll never inflict any pain on neighborhoods like what I've suffered.
Thank you. Ms. Self.
Thank you. I came here 27 years ago when I married my husband, John, who is a Santa Barbara native. I've been a member of the Pearl Chase Preservation Committee, which, thanks to Kellum, is thriving and active. And it's funny, when I was elected last time, I came into public view because I was fighting what they called traffic calming. I say that's an oxymoron, but so many people came up to me and said, "I voted for you just because of that. I didn't care what else you stood for." And I thought that rather odd, but now you've had a chance to see the other things that I stand for. I hope you'll go to my website. There are YouTube videos there where you can see a broad range of topics that I'm speaking on, and this is such a special place. I'm glad to be a part of the group that is trying to preserve what we all hold dear in this city, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Mateo.
Yeah, I'm all about supporting the community, and to preserve the community, you preserve not only its people, but its culture. It's a whole, it's a whole bunch of things. You know, when we look at what we want, we keep on saying, "What can you do up there?" And you look at all the people at the City Hall and the Administration Department, but it's your community, and I'm here to support people, to really speak up. I will listen to your voice. I will make sure your voice will get heard. And that's, you know, with a person's rights comes responsibility as well as respect for each other. I mean, we're here as city council members, we sign a piece of paper that says that our job is to protect the rights of each individual in the city. But with the rights comes responsibility when you live in a community, to respect each other's rights. How do you build? How you live? What do you bring into the town and what you don't bring into the community? These are things that I want to hear from you a lot, because it's your job to tell the city council what you want, and I want to support you in having more power and more say on what goes on in your community, and that's why I would love to have you vote for me.
Thank you. Ms. Falcone.
Well, I want to thank you all again for coming tonight and spending this evening with us. Historic resources, obviously, play an enormous part in the economy and in the charm of this city. This goes without saying and is something we all hold near and dear. I do believe that we need to continue with the historic guidelines. I'm glad to see a historic element in the general plan, but the specifics are always in the implementing ordinances and in the guidelines of exactly how and what we designate as historic. Historic preservation is not just about Santa Barbara. It's regional. The Chumash occupied the entire region for centuries, and we are part of that heritage, and we need to make sure that we respect the regional aspects of all of this. Protecting individual neighborhoods, protecting small-town character is something I've always fought for and always will continue to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mario.
Thank you for the discussion tonight. One of my goals as a city council member is to connect people to City Hall and especially our youth, and I will have youth internships in my office at City Hall, and one of their assignments is going to be a white paper or a video about historic preservation. They could interview Gerald Jackman, who I think's a fascinating guy. They could make a video of some of the beautiful old homes that we have in Santa Barbara, and I think it's important that our young people feel connected to their history and take pride in it. Finally, I'm endorsed by some former and current members of the Pearl Chase Society, Sue Adams, Marty Bloom, and Roger Horton, and I'm proud to have their support and others. You can go to my website, too, kathymario.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aldana.
Okay. Well, for one, the community keeps asking, "How do we keep Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara?" And I would start with voting for Santa Barbara. I'm a local Santa Barbara. I was born and raised here, attended local schools, graduated from Santa Barbara High School. I walked, and I walked down the hill. How many people in the audience know what that means? A few of you. Okay, good. You're from Santa Barbara. And I love my city, our city, I should say, and volunteered for the last four years for that reason. So, with your vote, we will keep Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schwartz.
Recently, when I was down at Sterns Wharf, I happened to talk with a visitor who had come off the cruise ship, and the first thing this individual said to me was, "What an amazing city. Your architecture, your history, and your friendly people really make this a very special place." And I think that visitor was so right. My family moved here in 1967, first for a professional opportunity that my father had at UCSB, but what kept us here all these years was the very special quality of our natural resources, our environmental resources, and our depth of reverence for who and what has come before us and where we are going, and the fact that if we do not respect that, and this goes back to the threat, then we will allow the erosion of what makes Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you, Ms. Naylor. I think perfect analogy saved the best for last. So, historical preservation is important. Cultural Resources Department is an important aspect. Number two, Office of Human Development and Employment, a local office to be generated. Number three, work directly with Paul Casey to establish the refinement and the efficiency output of zoning and ordinance legislation within our city charter. Four, neighborhood characteristics that are preserved, very important. And five, this could be accomplished through my proposal, district-based elections in the California State 14,026-3B. Why? As a good public financier and steward, I would have fiscal oversight, establishment of public works, and public welfare on my agenda to basically increment the allotted budgets. And lastly, have a retinous and a new redevelopment agency board so we could redevelop the east and west neighborhoods. Thank you very much. Vote for Cruzito Cruz. Viva la causa.
Thank you. We want to thank all the candidates for joining us this evening and for respecting our time constraints. We thank all of you in the audience as well for coming out tonight to become informed voters. On behalf of the Santa Barbara Conservancy and the Santa Barbara View, thank you and good night.